Welcome, everybody, to the November 25th, 2019 meeting of Van Wirt City Council. We will begin with the invocation provided by Pastor Keith Stoller, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please rise.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful again, in Jesus' name, for the call to public service. We pray, God, that as each council member and each member of the administration participate, share their reports, that, Father, they will be filled with truth and wisdom and understanding. We're thankful also, Father, for the large turnout of the public. And there, Father, may be some contentious issues dealt with as well tonight. And so, not only for the city council and the administration, but also, Father, for each member of the public that's involved in discussion, we pray again for wisdom and understanding. We pray, God, that each speaker will conduct themselves with grace and understanding and fairness. Lord, this week, as we celebrate Thanksgiving, we are so thankful, Father, for the place, the safe place in which we live. We're thankful, God, for our public officials, the police, the firemen, State Patrol, the sheriff's department. God, thankful for each one of their participations in keeping us safe. Most importantly, Father, we're thankful for our Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior. In His name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Veronica, please hold the roll.
Mr. Markward?
Here.
Mr. Penton?
Here.
Mrs. Murky?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Agler?
Here.
Mr. Trishu?
Here.
Mr. Straley?
Mr. Straley is out of town, so I need a motion to allow his absence.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Agler, seconded by Mr. Penton. Please call the roll.
Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trishu?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Sorry for that. I missed that until I read it. Let's see. So, everybody was provided the minutes to November 13th meeting. There is one additional line. If you turn to the very last page, under the first advisory reading of ordinance 19-11-060, we neglected to put that it was confirmed on its first reading. So, that will be added before we make the official print, signed copies. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
So, you're just going to add the results of the first advisory?
And then, yes. So, we'll add the results and then print them off on the appropriate paper and sign them off. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes from November 13th?
Move to accept as amended.
Move to accept by Mr. Trishu, seconded by Mrs. Murky. Please call the roll.
Mr. Trishu?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Sorry for that. I missed that until I read it. Let's see. So, everybody was provided the minutes to November 13th meeting. There is one additional line. If you turn to the very last page, under the first advisory reading of ordinance 19-11-060, we neglected to put that it was confirmed on its first reading. So, that will be added before we make the official print, signed copies. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
So, you're just going to add the results of the first advisory?
And then, yes. So, we'll add the results and then print them off on the appropriate paper and sign them off. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes from November 13th?
Move to accept as amended.
Move to accept by Mr. Trishu, seconded by Mrs. Murky. Please call the roll.
Mr. Trishu?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to comments, communications, and petitions, I have a few before we get to the individuals on the agenda. First and foremost, for everybody that will be serving next term, our first meeting in 2020, 2020 is January 13th. I would ask that everybody be here at 5:45 for a swearing-in ceremony. Judge Straley will be here for swearing-in. So, January 13th at about 5:45. The other, I have a request from Main Street Van Wirt. We have two members of their board. Typically, it's the mayor and a councilperson. So, Mr. Markward, as the incoming mayor, are you willing to serve on that board? Can I notify them that you will serve on the board? And then, the economic development, once I approve, once we get everything, I've been working on the committee assignments for everybody. And Mr. Jeff Callis is a new member of the city council. He will be the chairperson for economic development. So, my recommendation, when that becomes official, that he will be the nominee from the city council. But we kind of have to wait until he's officially installed in order to nominate him and Mr. Markward. So, that will happen on the, both of those will officially happen on the 13th. That's the plan. Received several emails, a couple from the Auditor of the State. Martha, notification of filing of the audit report. This is just identifying that it is now public information?
Yes. Yep. It is released and it's available on the Auditor of State's website.
Okay. Second, November 20th, 2019, this is a call to action from the Ohio Municipal League. It says, "Bill preempting municipal income tax received second hearing." And as I read this, you sent this out, Martha, this should be a concern for us. It says, right in the first paragraph, it says municipalities that connect, collect $100 million in annual revenue. Are we in that?
Well, no.
$100 million?
No. No. But it will pertain to, there are things in that that will pertain to us.
Okay.
Yeah. That's just that one section.
All right. So, do you have recommendations of what we should do or just pay attention to this?
They're just urging everyone to write their legislators.
Okay. All right. Also, received information on sunshine, the updated sunshine laws, or not, sunshine laws aren't updated, but what the state is attempting to do is create a STAR system that identifies organizations or municipalities, government agencies, that are good at being transparent versus not so good at being transparent. So, this information is really related to administration. The last thing that I have before we get to the issue where I assume most people are here for is I received a letter from Mr. Joe Jared identifying that he wishes to appeal the zoning board's decision on the conditional use request that was denied for location 113 West Main Street. His next stop?
Here.
Here?
Here.
We need to set a meeting?
Correct. And do that so we can notify any other interested parties, which would be the neighbors.
Okay. So, our next meeting?
December 13th.
December 13th.
I'm sorry, December 9th. Excuse me.
December 9th.
January 13th, I got it confused. December 9th.
I'm going to schedule that meeting for between 6:00 and 6:30. So, that will be zoning board appeal.
I think there's a record of everyone that was notified for the zoning meeting. I assume they're going to be the ones that would get notification for this meeting.
Okay. Zoning Board Appeal Meeting, Monday, December 9th, from 6:00 to 6:30. I will need you to get with Erica and invite all of the individuals that were invited to the initial meeting to that meeting.
Will members of the zoning board be here?
No. It comes to us. Council then decides to uphold or overturn. Ultimately, council has the final decision. Zoning Board makes recommendations and then council has the final decision. So, the zoning board turned Mr. Jared down. He is appealing that to one level up, which is us. If council then would be deciding to agree with the zoning board, which would basically say he's not allowed to do what he wants to do, or disagreeing with the zoning board, which means he's allowed.
To approve his application.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Over the last week or so, and I made copies of this for everybody, I received one, two, three, three different emails from citizens. The first one, or citizens or interested parties, the first one was from Janine Foster. The second one came from Mr. Chris Wilson. And the third one was from Ms. Ashley Valliot. On the agenda, Mr. Wilson asked for, to be included on the agenda first, so he will get the floor first. The way this works, when we have a bunch of people here, if you're on the agenda, you get five minutes. So, Mr. Wilson and Mr. McMahon will get five minutes. Everybody else has the opportunity to speak at two-minute intervals. So, Chris, please state your name, address for the record, and then I will start your timer.
All right. Mr. President, Commander, Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Chris Wilson. With me is my wife, Jody Wilson. We reside at 503 North Market Street. Through our company, Time Tent Promotions LLC, we own property located at 227th North Market Street. The adjacent property on the north side, 233 North Market, was recently acquired by a group called Haven of Hope. From newspaper articles in the group's social media page, the building will house a man's homeless shelter. Certainly a notable cause that I support wholeheartedly. About two weeks ago, I asked the city administration whether homeless shelter is permissible in the property's B3 zoning district. I was told there is no provision for homeless shelter in the city's zoning ordinances and that the matter was being referred to the law director. It has always been my understanding that a zoning variance is necessary to use a property for a purpose not listed under current zoning rules. Last week, I was told by the city law director that the city administration had determined the homeless shelter as a semi-public use, which is allowed under B3 zoning, and a variance would not be necessary. I think it's very important to point out that semi-public use is allowed in all residential zoning districts, R1, R2, R3, and business zoning districts, B2 and B3. This means that if the homeless shelter is classified as semi-public use, it can go just about anywhere in the city, except the industrial districts, without any type of hearing or approval. During my research on the internet, homeless shelters present zoning issues in many communities. Almost everyone seems to be in agreement with the concept, but there's a lot of controversy regarding the appropriate place to put them and how they should be regulated. Under current Van Wirt zoning ordinances, zoning board approval is required for group homes, clinics, residential care, assisted living, nursing homes, and adult foster care. Homeless shelters would fall into the same general family as these facilities. Based on the administration's determination, homeless shelters are free to locate in most anywhere in Van Wirt, including residential, and are not regulated in any aspect. This is too important to be allowed to slip through the cracks based on a mission or loophole in the city's zoning ordinances. We request homeless shelters be viewed as a non-conforming use and require a variance hearing for neighboring property owners and other concerned citizens who have an opportunity to ask questions and express their concerns. Going forward, council needs to take a proactive role in this and address the appropriate location for homeless shelters and what regulations are necessary to ensure the safety and well-being of both clients and the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. McMahon?
Okay.
You again have five minutes.
Thank you, Council. And my name's Andy McMahon. I'm at 1102 East Urban Road. So, I've been a member or lived in Van Wirt since 1986 and been involved with a lot of organizations here in town. About two years ago, realized the problem that we have with homelessness here in Van Wirt, Ohio. And about a year and a half ago, working with Love in the Name of Christ, it came and it got real, because before that, I really didn't think we had a situation with homelessness. But worked the call center there, and we had three women called in who needed housing, and there wasn't any we could find for them. So, we, Love in the Name of Christ is a clearinghouse that tries to match need with resources. A week later, Kathy Taylor invited me to a meeting on homelessness, and NOCAT came down and said they handle six counties. They have a woman, or two women, that handle housing for homeless, a rapid rehousing program. One of them handles Van Wirt County, the other handles the other five counties. So, it, you know, it got real at that point. We've been meeting since last September with open meetings and, you know, looking for a location. We've had, our last open meeting was last Monday at the house. So, those are open to the public that can come in. We're interested in anyone's concerns, because we want to make sure that we, you know, address those concerns and do things correctly. We're not the only homeless shelter in town. The Crisis Care is a homeless shelter for those who suffer from domestic abuse and other similar problems. There's also the YWCA. They have homeless shelter for women at this time. I understand there may be some changes in what they do in the near future, but right now, they're homeless shelter for women. The Crisis Care is in a residential area. At least one of the YWCA, you know, ones is in a residential area. Before we selected the building, we had worked with council on finding out what, you know, where that could be, what zoning, and we understood that it was, you know, open, that we could, you know, it was a permitted usage. So, we began, we did some serious looking at a property over on Central. We are incorporated as a nonprofit corporation in the state of Ohio. We have filed 501(c)(3). I'm waiting to hear back. Chuck Cook took care of both those filings for us. We are, we looked at a place over on Central, but the cost made it not really feasible. Building here is the right size for what we want to do. And, you know, the, we worked with the union, and they're in favor of what we do, and so they work with us as far as giving us a fair pricing on that. And, you know, we've got a lot of support throughout the community at our board meetings, as well as, you know, private individuals and donations from that. So, I don't know what else to say regarding, you know, that. Open for any other questions.
All right. Thank you. Anybody in the public wish to make a comment? Just let me, everybody that emailed, it doesn't prevent you from making a comment, but everybody up here has those emails. I made sure that everybody had a copy of the individuals that emailed in. So, please state your name, address, and two minutes.
My name is Lisa Agler, and I reside at 146 East Sycamore. I own the property adjacent north to the soon-to-be homeless shelter. Their property, my driveway runs the entire back of my house, which runs the entire side of their building. My, I have custody of my two grandsons through addiction, and now they're bringing this literally two feet from my house. I'm going to have to worry about my children being out there. I've talked to Andy approximately an hour on my concerns, which, when I left, I was more concerned than before I talked to him, because I was not hearing my safety questions being answered the way I thought they should be for a homeless shelter. On within literally three houses, there are 12 boys from junior high down that come over and play, play basketball, which is on our garage, which if anybody gets more than welcome to drive by my property, can see that, how close it is, that I don't want my children to be around these people coming in, knowing that they can't bring drugs or whatever, and then dropping wrenches or who knows what on their way to this for my kids or any neighbor kids. And I'm in property values. I've lived there for 24 and a half years. Who is going to buy my house? It is two foot from this place. My property value has went down to probably nothing. Like, nobody is going to want to live there. Nobody wants it in their backyard, and I am that person, because it is literally in my backyard.
Thank you. Mr. Jared, you raised your hand.
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
Go Jared, 2333 and, you know, 113 West Main. I think there's a lot of misconception about homeless people. First off, I've helped, when I said I helped a little bit this year, I've helped 11 people. Two, I ended up busing out of the city. I don't know of anybody busing on the end. Two, I made no longer welcome in our building because of violent tendencies. I know that the current shelter has no intention whatsoever of housing any sex offenders. I know that this is a kind of an act, a kindness that actually hits your guy bottom, your bottom dollar, when we help homeless people become taxpaying residents. It builds us up. I don't have any concerns about the people that I helped. Well, one, I knew that somebody was no longer welcome out of 11. One, had a problem with marijuana, was no longer welcome. Across the action of this city, one in 10 people are hooked on something lately. So, and that's non-homeless people. So, I hope we don't pull all silver mouse turds on this one. And I am glad to know that semi-public use makes what I'm doing legal, so, and people that I am helping. But I just, I just don't want to see us overreact to all of this. I know that this community could benefit from homeless shelter, and it will actually help this city grow against the offset of loss of 200 people over the next five years. And when we make somebody a non-homeless resident, that's one more person gained.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. Anybody else?
Mr. President, I'd like to just make one comment about how we got to where we are right now.
Sure.
The, Andy came to the administration and asked where this could possibly fit into the code, if it fit or if he had to come for a variance. We took a lot of time to look at our zoning and determined that the semi-public use, quasi-use, was the best place to put it, because it didn't fit in group home. And I have to agree that Mr. Wilson's point of not having a definitive homeless category, it's pretty tough to fit it anywhere in our legislation. But we made a determination, and that would apply, so that's what got us here. So, it's up to you guys to sort that out.
Any other, any other comments before I comment?
My name is Kurt Tomlinson. We're not related.
Yeah, I know, we're not. You say that, we're probably, you say that.
We've never met before.
I don't think you want to be related to me.
I live at 403 East Crawford Street here in Van Wirt. I'm also the pastor at Trinity United Methodist Church. I've been serving on the board of Haven of Hope for a little over years since we've started. And I hear the fear, and I want to say that it's very real for people who are worried. We did extensive research as we were getting ready for this project. We visited six homeless shelters in six different cities about the size, maybe a little bit bigger than Van Wirt, maybe a little smaller. Some of them are in the middle of residential areas. And I understand the fear, and I understand about kids. I understand the worry. But the reality is, an empty building that's been sitting there for a long period of time is less safe than a maintained, staffed, noticed property with lights and cameras. And I think, and you may not believe me, and that's okay, but I believe the kids in the neighborhood will be safer, because we're not bringing homeless in from other communities. They're there. I've talked to business owners here in town who have had homeless folks homestead in the downtown area. I've talked to people who've had their buildings broken into for homeless. The parks have homeless folks that are living in them, I believe, from our study, from talking with folks in the community. And that's not making any appeal to the faith end of this, and it's, that's very obvious. I could do that as a pastor very easily. But I think it will be safer for the community in the long run. Now, I understand it's fearful, and I understand that we have to do things the right way and make sure the zoning laws are lined up and everything. But I think, in the long run, if we trust that the folks that have a heart for this are going to do things in the right way, that it'll actually be better for our community in the long run.
No, you speak first. That's a deal. You run ahead. Okay. I'll let them.
I'll yield to my two minutes to Lisa. She's got more to say.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah. Yeah. Please state your name again.
Lisa Agler, 146 East Sycamore Street.
Sure.
Um, on the safety issue, I was told that it was not, it was going to be only manned by video cameras, and that nobody would actually be there during the hours that people were there. That raised a big red flag for me. I work in healthcare. I deal with addicts. I deal with mentally ill. I know exactly what people are going to be there. They probably, you know, have come to the office. That scares me. How, when I looked at the state of Ohio, I told him, it has to be manned. There's, you cannot leave these people. They will kill each other. A schizophrenic off of meds, that's a dangerous thing. Put him with somebody that's tweaking and going to be, you know, going up into withdrawal. Somebody has to be there. The whole time that place is open. They could, they said they would watch it from their cell phone at home. That, to me, scares me, because we use my back door is our way of coming and going. Anybody that comes to my house uses my back door. It's like my front door. These people will see me, and they will know when I'm coming and going, when my family is home, when they're not home. I've already had my house broken into by addicts. I've had stuff stolen. This...
This, this is just something that worries me tremendously. And to bring it all into one spot, everybody in Van Wert County into my backyard. And literally, if you guys could drag down, it's two, two feet from where my boys are all day long in my, in my driveway. And I, I just, I think there could've been a better place for it. Up on Main Street or there's tons of empty buildings. Not residential.
Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna make a quick, quick, uh, statement for, uh, everyone here and, and for council's benefit as well. Um, but I, I preface that with, with thanking everybody for coming here. This is, this is a, a great show of, of how, you know, democracy's supposed to work. It's great to hear everybody's viewpoints. Everybody's been civil with each other, um, regardless of whether they agree with each other. It's nice to hear that type of thing, you know, considering the climate we all see every day. Um, that being said, uh, what I wanna kinda discuss is, is, uh, procedural possibilities. Just so, now, it's kinda boring, but that's, that's kinda where I, I, I have to, you know, live with all this, so. Um, the administration has determined that a zoning, um, request or an application wasn't necessary. I believe actually one was even prepared by, by Haven of Hope, but the city determined that wasn't necessary and returned their, their fee, their, and their application at that point. With that determination, according to, um, uh, was it ordinance, uh, 150.66, that's application and appeals. Technically, an application wasn't applied for. However, a determination was made through the administration. Appellate rights attach at that point. The determination, I believe, was made Thursday or Friday of last week.
Uh, Thursday, I believe.
So, two weeks from that date, anyone opposed to the, the, opposed to the, uh, determination made by the administration could choose to appeal. That would be, that could be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. On the issue of whether or not Haven of Hope's property falls under the semi-public or quasi-public use, okay? There could be, uh, a hearing potentially scheduled where, um, uh, parties would be able to lay out their information on what, on, on, uh, why you either do or don't make that definition. Um, and I think, and that's where basically what it'll boil down to. And if, if, if the Board of Zoning Appeals believes it makes that definition, I believe it'll be compelled to approve it. If they don't believe it makes that, that, um, definition, then I believe they'll have to deny that. Um, as far as what council should consider going forward, and I believe the mayor discussed that point, it's been touched upon by Mr. Wilson, there is no definition of homeless shelter in this community. Quite frankly, you know, yes, we've had crisis care in the YWCA for many years. Most of that dealing with domestic abuse and that's, and that's how those situations got started. But homelessness as a, as, as a, I don't wanna call it a crisis, but as a, as a situation that it is, that, that Mr. McMahon has outlined, really up until recently, has not really been contemplated in this community. Even Mr. McMahon in his statement says that he's really come to this in the last two years or less. Um, so it's not been contemplated in our zoning. Our zoning was established in the 1990s. In the 1990s in Van Wert, Ohio, um, I don't, you know, all of us that were in Van Wert, you know, at that time, did any of us ever consider homelessness even, did it even cross your mind 25 years ago? I guess it's, you're probably not. Um, so, so, yeah, this is, this is something that, that we're kind of, you know, dealing with as, as it comes, you know, dealing with it as it comes along. I do think regardless of what, of council, of what you decide to do with this situation, I believe that the definition of a homeless shelter going forward is something that the city needs to, um, address as part of its zoning, as part of its zoning scheme, program, whatever. Uh, first by defining it, second by, by deciding where you wanna place it within the city, um, as Mr. Wilson touched upon in his statement. Um, it's, I think it's very important going forward because I could give you a hypothetical, say hypothetically, Mr. McMahon's, um, application is ultimately approved. Say, you know, say the shelter is successful. Say it's so successful that it needs more space and they maybe need a new location. We could be at that period of time, right back where we are today. And, and that's not, that's not, that's not responsible on our part. So, I believe regardless of, of, of how you decide, I mean, you kinda have two decisions to make. What you're gonna do with this specific issue and how you address everything going forward. And addressing it going forward by defining it and placing it in your overall zoning regulations, I think is very important. That's my opinion. Um, and, and, uh, members of council, I hope you all decide, uh, you know, I, I kinda believe you have kinda three options. Approve, approve this going forward, deny this going forward, or, or let the appellate process to the, um, you know, take, take its place should Mr. Wilson or his neighbors decide that, uh, they would appeal the decision of the city administration and, and have it go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do, uh, first of all, do I have any questions for any of the members of council? Yes, Mr. Mark?
I wanna clarify your options.
Yes.
It sounded to me like, the way it stands right now, the administration has ruled that it's a properly located thing in the zone.
Administration has approved and, and Jay, Jerry, if I overstep my bounds, please correct me.
I couldn't think of any.
Okay.
And so if no one does anything, it's been approved.
Correct. What, what, what happened is Mr. McMahon, on behalf of Haven of Hope, filed an application for a variance.
That was told wasn't necessary.
It was returned along with his.
Let's clarify that just a little bit, if you don't mind me interrupting.
Sure, please.
That was for a homeless shelter, right?
Yeah.
And we didn't have homeless shelter in the definition, so we didn't need the application for a variance.
Okay, well, it was applied for. It was, it was deemed not necessary.
Right.
That, because this building qualified through B3 zoning as a semi-public, quasi-public use.
So, if a person, would they have to be a resident of the city? But you were talking about someone who wanted to.
Appeal?
File, yeah.
Well, let me, let, let me read you.
There we go.
150.66, um, section B, okay? Subsection B1. An appeal to the board may be taken by any person aggrieved by an officer of the municipality affected by any decision of the zoning inspector. In this case, the zoning inspector, the city administration, is the zoning inspector in this case. Um, such appeal shall be taken within 14 days after that decision. That decision was last Thursday, the 21st. That means you have 14 days from that date. Okay? Um, by filing with the zoning inspector and with the board, that's the Board of Zoning Appeals, a notice of appeal specifying the grounds thereof, specifying what you're appealing. The zoning inspector shall forthwith transmit to the board all papers constituting the record upon which the application appealed from was taken. In this case, there was no, there was no application, but the board would be.
But based on that, it sounds to me like it shouldn't be here yet.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just laying out what the procedure is. However, due to the unique situation of everything we had, I, I think the administration and myself agreed that this is something council should be made aware of and that the public, this is a matter of public interest, which is why we're all here.
I made aware of and I, I hope it doesn't sound like I'm scolding anybody, but it probably will. I hope that that procedure was relayed to Chris Wilson and anyone else who thought that this was the next step.
You're fine, ma'am, I'm sorry. We were instructed by the law director and, uh, mayor to bring this to council.
Yes, yes.
For discussion.
Okay.
And the, and the public can always bring their concerns to council.
They said the next step was to take it before council. That's what we were told by the law director and the mayor.
Because, and, and the reason for that is because the, the council right now can go against administration.
Correct.
We can say no right now if, if council so chooses. And if that happens, then Mr. McMahon would have to go through the variance. He would ask to ask for a variance or Haven of Hope would ask for a variance. It would go to the board. If council tonight decides not to do anything, then it's your responsibility, one of you, that is, you know, against the zoning or doesn't believe the zoning was interpreted correctly, you would then, it would be your responsibility to go to the zoning board. That is why this is the, this is the, this is an appropriate venue for that.
Correct.
So, that's, that's the two, that, that's what's, then, there's a third step or not a third step, or it's a second step. Depending upon what ultimately happens with that location and Haven of Hope, then it's the responsibility of this council to define where homeless shelters need to be in our variances going forward. The problem is, is we can't go backwards. We can't retroactively say that, no, 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 wait. Homeless shelters need to be here because that we, we can't hold them, can't hold a, an entity accountable for something that wasn't in place. It's like raising taxes and then back taxing you. We can't do that. Does that make sense? Everybody understand?
Mr. President, I think we skipped over one little step there.
Okay.
If this should go to the zoning board and a zoning board will fall on one side or the other, the other individual still has an opportunity to come back and appeal it to council.
Could end up back.
And if the council upholds it, then they still have a third step to go to court.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jared had one minute, Joe.
There's a, there's a young lady behind me.
One scenario that hadn't verbalized, but it's potential both in a homeless shelter and our building and that's squatty. Where a person requires occupancy and then you have to, I think that should be considered in any, any, uh, or just, or zoning requirements like maybe allow guest-only access or, you know, no occupant status technically. I think it should be considered to protect kindness from being punished.
Okay, all right. Ma'am? Did, you raised your hand, so please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Tina Baxter and I live at 302 North Market. I'm in northeast corner of this, where this is gonna be. So, I guess, I'm hearing a lot about homeless shelter. I got an email from Ashley, hey, did you know this? I honestly say I didn't know this. It used to be a place where they would train people, um, like a internship for HVAC system. So, I guess my question is, everybody wants to move forward and my question is, what's the size of the building? How many bedrooms are you thinking or how many cots? Is there a kitchen? Are they gonna be there 24 hours a day? Um, are you feeding them? Um, are you providing transportation to them? Are you vetting them? Are they sex offenders? Are they drug addicts? What do we know about these people coming in? I didn't know, honestly, I didn't know they were had a huge homeless population for men. I didn't. I do know in Fort Wayne, I volunteer up there all the time. And I can tell you, I just recently helped walk the river looking for a young man that's come up missing and, um, it's littered with all the clothing that's been handed out to the homeless people. It's, it's a problem. Um, are you gonna pick these people up? Line of calls, Fort Wayne calls, hey, we have an overload here. You guys got any beds? Is somebody gonna drive up there and pick those people up and bring them back here? How do I know that? Who's gonna be there watching those people? Lisa's right, this is right out her back door. And I just think there's gotta be a lot more questions here before you just say, yep, let's do it. I think the first, to all the council members, do you know enough about this to say yes, put it next to your house? We need to have our questions answered here. I'd like to know how on average tonight, how many homeless men there actually are in Van Wert? And I didn't know it was a problem. I understand mental illness and all that, but you know what? Plenty of jobs out there right now. Plenty of people can work and get a, you know, place to go. How do we fix that problem? How do we help those people bridge that?
Time is up. Thank you. Good.
I think you oughta answer some of those questions.
Well, I, my thinking, I'm, I'm in favor of, of letting go of the variance. To the, that board first, yeah.
So, you're in favor of, uh, no action from council?
At, at, I, I'm in favor of.
That's what that would do, Joe.
No action from council.
No, well, I, this should automatically go to the variance, like you said, on the, uh, one of the options. Instead of having them file it, I think one of the options was that we could turn, turn down administrations and make it go to variance. Make it go to the, uh, zoning board.
For sentences, the appeal may be taken by any person aggrieved or by an officer of the municipality affected by the decision. Now, that means basically anyone aggrieved, which is the neighbors, um, or any officer of the municipality.
Or you.
Can, can file the app, can file the application to have it, have it appealed. So, but you'd have to file that with the, with the zoning board. Yes, sir?
I, I know I'm probably out of words. I thought you said the council would, if the council so chose tonight, they could, they could get your name on this thing.
They could, they could.
And that's what we're discussing.
Yes, there's, 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 Chris, there's, there's three options.
Isn't that what council, isn't that what Councilman Egler said?
We're trying to see if he wants to put that in a form of motion.
Well, I, I don't think, let me, let me be clear on, on what the options are. The options are yes, no, or, or pass essentially. And pass would, would still mean that you as a, as an affected aggrieved party.
What does no mean now?
No means, then the next option at that point would be you as, as, if, if no means. Okay, what does no mean? If no means that Haven of Hope is allowed to remain without having to file any sort of an application, then, then your next step would be.
No, no.
I think I, I either asked it backwards or you answered it backwards.
Okay, we're not on the same page. Let's go, okay, let's go back.
It's my understanding, council tonight can override the city administration's decision.
They can, yes.
And that's a yes.
That's a yes, okay. That being a yes.
Which is, which, which automatically triggers a variance.
Which, which automat, no, which automatically triggers.
The assumption would be that they would request a variance.
Oh, okay, okay.
They would, they would have to go through the process of requesting a variance. Cause, cause the, the council saying yes, under your, under your scenario means that, that Haven of Hope doesn't automatically qualify as a semi-public or quasi-public use, okay? That being said, that, that is a allowed permitted use, which means no application for a variance would be required. Now, by the council overriding that, that means yes, variance required or variance request required, okay? That's, that's a yes. A no would be that council would agree with the administration and then your appellate right would be at that point, going, going along here. And if I, if I flipped it around backwards again, Chris, I apologize. Then your right at that point would be, if you were, if you chose to go forward.
I totally understand that.
Would be to appeal to the common police court. Within 28 days of today's date, okay? And, and, and Mr. McMahon, reciprocally, similar rights would be afforded to Haven of Hope as well. I mean, those kinds, those kinds of procedural rights obviously go both ways.
So, Mr. Egler.
I'm, I'm in favor and I would, I'll make that a motion to override the, uh, administration so that Haven of Hope has to file for that variance and let the zoning board do its job.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, by Mr. Egler to override the decision of the, uh, administration in relation to Haven of Hope. Do I have a second?
I've got a procedural question.
Sure.
At the variance or when a request is made.
Correct, yes, sir.
In other words, is there an advantage to being the person who brings it? In other words, if the vote goes one way and Haven of Hope is requesting a variance or if, for example, Chris is requesting a denience of the variance, does it matter? Does one party have the advantage, you know, who's bringing it or doesn't?
I don't believe so. Uh, Mr. Fleming, you've, you've been a part of more of those hearings. Mr. Fleming, you've, you've been part of more of those hearings than I have.
I don't think so.
It's an impartial board, it's three citizens in the community to make that decision.
So I, I don't believe, who, who brings the request? I don't think there's any, any person has an advantage by being the filer. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Mrs. Murgy. Please call the roll.
You're gonna ask for comments?
You just had one, but you want another one?
Well, now that we have a second, I know we're gonna vote on it. Just because I don't fault the administration for telling Haven they didn't need a variance because it mentions charitable and philanthropic uses. But that's as close as it gets. But since they were already prepared to ask for a variance anyway, even though I don't fault the administration for making that decision, I'm gonna say go ahead and ask for the variance.
Yeah. We have to have the vote, so.
But that's my explanation.
Well, I, I have a comment there while we're talking about it. What variance would he apply for? What, what would it...
Well, let's, let's wait. We don't even know if we have, we don't have the vote yet. All of that can be...
It's just gonna circle right back.
It's...
Be right back here.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a, a motion by Mr. Egler, a second by Mrs. Murgy to override, to over, overrule the decision of administration. Everybody good? Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Tricia?
No.
Okay. The yeses have it, which means the, my assumption is that Haven of Hope will reassign their variance request. Okay?
It'll be ended more.
All right. Any other comments about this situation? Yes? Oh, I, yes.
Sorry, my name's Jamie Ramos, 327 South Walnut Street, and I just have a question because this lady brought up a, a bunch of negative type thing, but I just like the answers to those questions.
Well, the answers, we're, are address, we're addressing the zoning issue here.
Understood. I just, I just have those questions as well.
I can, I can let Mr. McMahon have two minutes.
Okay. I won't need two minutes. Uh, basically, we are interested in listening to any concerns that anybody has. So, um, you know, let us know. And, um, there are, we have not set policy and procedures. The, um, uh, you know, as Egler mentioned about the, uh, the state, it's not a law, it's not part of the Ohio advice code. It, um, is something that came out of one of the department's kind of a best practices, um, you know, regarding that. Um, you know, we know, you know, one of the issues that's, that's a concern is whether or not anyone would be there overnight. Uh, two of the four that we visited did not have anybody there overnight. So, um, you know, they were smaller ones. They handled 16 beds, and we're having 10 beds. So, question as to how many beds? 10 beds. Uh, be our maximum. But, um, we, uh, you know, we're open to that. We are not, you know, saying we're not gonna have anybody there, that there's a concern there, and that would be, you know, a difference maker and support by the community, then we certainly, you know, um, don't have a problem with doing what we need to do to, to do that. So, we wanna know what concerns are, so that we can take steps to address those when we set our policies and procedures. But tonight, from what I understood, was more about, you know, is this the correct zoning?
Correct.
And so, you know, we didn't really come in to talk about policies and procedures just to whether or not this is the correct zoning for what we have.
Correct.
And, uh, you know, a decision's been made, and, you know, regarding that, and we will, you know, file for a variance.
Okay.
And I'm not sure just out of word depth, as to what we're filing for variance on, but...
That was my question.
You know, that is, that is a question that I'll...
Well, basically, what, basically what council has said is that homeless shelters do not fall under the semi-quasi-public use. So you're asking that it does.
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay. So we just be under the, that they call falls under the semi-private use.
The, the ones that require, you, you're asking that homeless shelters fall under the ones that can be approved by the zoning board?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay. All of you are more than welcome to stay, but you're also more than welcome to leave.
Before you leave, thank you for coming and happy Thanksgiving.
There's some very exciting budgetary issues to discuss.
This is a bigger meeting we have when we try to get on the harvest front. Be good, Andy.
All right. Uh, are there any other comments or communications from council that come before us tonight? From the public? Okay. Moving on to administrative reports, the mayor, Mr. Jerry Mays.
I'm speechless.
For once? Getting to the end of the line.
Well, I wish we could draw, draw a crowd like that every week, huh?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. President, I, I really don't have a whole lot to say. I do wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving, a blessed Thanksgiving, and enjoy your family, drive safely, and that's the end of my report.
All right. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Jerry. Safety Service Director, Mr. Jay Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just report that we are wrapping up leak pickup this week, so we'll have that done, and then we'll see what this big blow on Wednesdays, whether it happens or not, and what it looks like next week. But as of now, we are done at the end of this week.
Okay.
And I looked around this, I looked around this afternoon, and there wasn't, I couldn't find a bag out on the street, so I think people are pretty well ahead of it, but we'll...
There's one still on my street.
Is there?
Is that yours?
No, and I think they just put it out today because they picked up some already this week on my street, but there was one out there late this afternoon, so, yeah.
So we, we may run around, look for some stragglers next weekend.
Okay.
That's all I have to report.
Any questions for the Safety Service Director from council? From the public? Thank you, Jay. Auditor, Mrs. Martha Bait.
I don't have any report tonight, but I am going to excuse myself because I have a Christmas performance to prepare for. But, um, there's several pieces of legislation that are on the consent agenda regarding supplemental appropriation and some transfers, and I just wanna make sure nobody had any questions on those before I excuse myself. They're just, you're in, yeah, cleanup.
They're just kinda cleanup, right? Into your cleanup?
Yeah.
Compared to all this last time.
Ask them to be prepared. Yep, they're all ready to go, and, and I've double-checked them, so they're good to go.
Okay. Any questions for the auditor from council? From the public? Thank you, Martha. I'll allow you to leave.
It's for Christmas.
Would you like that?
She'll be part of the auditor.
I'm not her boss, so it doesn't matter. She can leave inside if she wants. Law Director, Mr. John Hatcher.
Just quickly, again, wanna thank everybody's participation. It was nice to see a, a packed room, but, but a civil discussion. That's, that's nice to see. I mean, you know, so, other than that, I don't really have a report. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone, and go from there. Is there anybody, anybody have any questions for me?
I'll make sure I understand.
Okay.
After they, after Andy files this request for a variance...
Yes.
At that time, uh, if the...
He'll be heard at the nearest zoning Board of Appeals meeting he can get with that, that leaves the proper amount of time to get notice out. I'm, I'm not sure with the calendar, Mr. Mayor, whether or not that's in time for the next meeting or not.
It's not, it'll be, it'll be in January.
So, but he'd be heard in January.
So, when that's heard then by the zoning board in, in January, then, if it goes in his favor...
It, it actually, either way, it could be appealed back here by either of the...
Okay, that was my question.
Or, it could go, either party could, could appeal it.
It'll, it'll be back here, and that vote will really matter.
It will come back here. So we have, we have time to call Andy Newton, get a tour of the place, and find out enough to have a more informed vote than I was able to have tonight.
That, and, and I think, and I implore members of council to, um, you know, discuss and address the issue of what a homeless shelter, of what we want to define as a homeless shelter for the city. It may not apply to this case, might, won't apply to this case technically, or Mr. Jared's case. But, anything going forward, it would apply to, and should apply to. And obviously, if it's a big enough problem to have a room, or a big enough situation to have a room full of people here, if Mr. Mc, you know, hypothetically speaking, going back to the hypothetical I discussed, say Mr. McMahon's property is ultimately approved, and he wants, and, and he has 10 beds, and he, you know, Haven of Hope decides that their mission is, their mission discovers that they need 20, and that facility can't house 20, he's gonna have to move. So we would all be right back here for the, the same kind of discussion, two years down the road, four years down the road, seven years down the road, or whatever. So I think as, as, I think, I implore council to consider defining what a homeless shelter is, and where it fits in our zoning regulatory scheme, program, whatever you wanna call it, for the city of Van Worf.
Are there other cities that have, uh, code sections that deal specifically with homeless?
They, there are other cities that have defined it, and I will, I, between now and the 9th of December, I will try to get some definitions together, scanned, emailed. I'll leave a copy in your box for you, Mr. Penton.
Thank you.
Uh, so everybody, so you can see what other cities have done, you know, handed the same topic, what they've done with it. That doesn't mean we have to do what they did, but at least you could see what else has been done. Okay?
Right. That's what I want. We just, this came so quick tonight that I thought it was difficult to make a really informed decision.
Oh, I, I, I don't, I don't blame you. And that's part of the reason why President Tomlinson sent out the emails to people.
I appreciate that. I read them all, and highlighted them, and all that kind of stuff, but I, I still need more information, I think.
And, 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 you know, it, it's the kind of thing that, that needs to be discussed, needs to be addressed. There's a, not quite the same, but similar issue involving Mr. Jared that will come before council, I believe, the next council meeting. Those are the types of things that we, we need to discuss, and the more information we get, the better everybody is, is in the city going forward. So, um, you know, ask your constituents, uh, ask around, if you know people that are in government in other cities, ask them if they've addressed the issue, what they've talked about, how it's been addressed. I will do the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the law director?
Well, I'm, I'm on this subject. To me, that's the job of the zoning board. All them questions that was asked, that she asked, how many beds? How many, that's what, that's what the zoning board's gonna ask, and that, that's what they'll make their decision. That, that shouldn't, that, if the zoning board does their due diligence, that, to me, that's what the zoning board, that's what they're gonna bring to the zoning board, they're gonna hear all that from both sides, and they'll make their decision. And then...
Wait, can I interrupt you? I, I, I think the zoning board's role's gonna be to look at this definition, say whether it either fits or doesn't fit.
I think I don't want that.
They're not gonna ask about bed numbers, or guards, or overnight.
Who's gonna, who asks those questions? And what, what, what is it?
That's why it's gonna come back here.
That's us.
It'll be back here with all those, and then it'll be part of this bodies.
Yeah. That's our decision at that point. If it comes, it'll ultimately come back here.
Correct, Mr. Law Director. It'd be their job to determine our rules, not to make rules.
You're completely correct, and, but I do think, in the process, the city can find out everything they want about this current application, any other application that's out there for anything close to similar, and what other cities do that are similarly situated. I think it's an opportunity for us to do our due diligence, make an informed decision, and, and have a, have an ordinance, you know, amending our zoning that makes sense regarding this issue as it pops up coming, you know, in the future. That's my opinion.
Ultimately, the decision's gonna end up being made here, from what was discussed tonight.
Most likely. I mean, that, that, it's not a sure thing, but...
Most likely, yes, I agree.
Either of those groups can ultimately appeal any zoning board decision.
Right. So it'd be who's us to find out as much as we can about both sides.
Correct.
But it doesn't necessarily end here.
Correct. I understand that.
Right. There's, they can all...
Go to court.
If they choose to.
I have a question. If it's prudent for us to work on this language as far as homeless shelters, when do we start on that? Do we start with our new, uh, uh, council members, or do we, or could we start it with this current group?
I think we have to do both, and, and, and part of, of where I'm gonna go at that is, we have a review of a zoning Board of Appeals decision involving, uh, Mr. Jared, set for December the 9th. Part of the discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, was discussion of homeless people using your facility. Is that correct?
That's correct. At least until after...
At some point in time. So, it's gonna be, this council's gonna have to do some work on it, but I agree with you. Um, any of you that, that know the incoming members, should probably have a long discussion with them about this topic, 'cause it's gonna land in their lap the moment, you know, right after they get sworn in. So, um, so please, you know...
They're, they're, they've all been instructed to either be here or watch online.
Yeah, so...
Right, Steve?
But, but, but the point is, it's definitely...
Andrew's out in the hall listening.
It's definitely something you should, um, educate yourself on, so. And I believe, Mr. Jared, you did have a comment to make?
A little bit pleonastic, but, um, I can't emphasize enough that, um, when, if the recent ordinance is related to the subject, that occupant status be prohibited, but guest status be allowed. They're not paying rent, they're a guest, they can't be allowed to squat and assume occupancy.
And, and I, I understand where you're coming from with that, and I guess my issue would be, I would just wanna make sure that the, uh, that whenever we'd come up with something like that would conflict with state law, and as long as it doesn't, it should be something that should be considered.
And the other point that was understated was, I can see anywhere in my building from this phone, I can hear anywhere in this building with my phone, I can unlock the doors with my phone. I can hear discussion of assault on me over this phone, because why one person is, is no longer welcome anywhere near my building. I think it's understated how good technology this is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yep. On the corner of Main and Vine, uh, I don't know if this is a question for Jay or Law Director, but Murphy's trash took that over, and on the wall, on the building of, they've got a, a towaway. No parking here, or it's gonna be towed away. That street parking.
On, on, I haven't seen it on Blind Street?
Yeah. You turn the corner off Main and the Vine, and look at the building, and they've got a towaway from Westwood Drive telling you, you can't park in front of there, and it been, it's a towaway.
Well, Frank used to park his plumbing base.
Yeah, it's angled parking here. You know, it's angled right there. When you turn the corner, you don't park this way, it's angled about three spaces.
I don't know if years ago that was designated as business parking, I, I...
Well, it was, uh, I, I grew up there, and it was customer parking because of the spot restaurant in the East End Market. That's the reason why it was angled parking there.
Right.
That was for customer parking, and that, it shouldn't be, I don't know, well...
Well, I don't know the history of that.
Well, I guess first step, first step will be to check the, to make sure whether or not it's...
Who owns it? I mean...
Murphy's bought it.
No, 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 who owns it, them or us?
Well, it may have been designated for them, is what he needs to check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I'm guessing, I would guess the right of way goes into those parking spaces, and if it's 40 feet, it's got to be into those parking spots. But, so, Mr. Hoffman sold that building to Murphy's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he moved out to West Main somewhere.
Yeah, he's out there beside, across the street in the B and K where...
I knew that, I didn't know he sold it. I didn't know, I didn't know he sold it. I knew he moved.
Well, no, they don't have to report, that's what they're selling.
Maybe he just rented it.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any other law director? Thank you, John. Committee reports, Health Service and Safety, Mr. Bill Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very short report tonight on code violations, we've had 15 since the last time I reported, seven of which are open, and they're relatively new, so everything's pretty cop性的.
Good.
That's all I had to, any questions?
All right, any questions for Health Service and Safety? Thank you, Bill. Economic Development, Warren is not here, that means it's to you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the November 13th meeting, it was asked that the law director prepare legislation regarding, or revising the job creation incentive program, so, looks like that has been prepared, but before I introduce it, Stacy, you want to go over the information on what's changing?
Thank you, sir. I gave you a one-page summary. On the top, it says incentive payment number four, that is the old language. Down below, I have given you the proposed language. The city auditor had shared before that she wanted to make sure that we were not paying an incentive on salary increases, for example, and so we had included a formula to get that out. In reality, we actually have gone back and used start dates of employees to eliminate past employees' payroll, so it allows us to simplify this process much easier for the tax administrator to calculate it going forward. So all we're doing is simplifying this while still considering the feedback from the city auditor and accomplishing both.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the proposed change reads incentive payment will be calculated annually by taking the incentive factor times the qualifying new payroll times the current City of Van Wort municipal income tax rate, and then the tiers remain the same as what we currently have.
Steve, one thing, all of you have the proposed 19-11-072, the committee is Economic Development, it's, that was an error, so...
Yes, it does read Finance now.
It should read Economic Development, so that's who asked for it to be prepared last time.
Any discussion on this change? So if not, I would move to introduce it to council this evening.
We have a motion to introduce.
As an emergency.
Ordinance 19-11-072 as an emergency, second by Mr. Egler, please call the roll.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Stacy, did you want this tonight? Is there a rush on it?
I think the only thing we have, the tax administrator has payments to make, so I think that was primarily...
I'd be tempted, I think we should.
Okay, then I would move that statutory rules be suspended.
Motion to suspend statutory rules, second by Mr. Egler, please call the roll.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Then I move that ordinance 19-11-072 be passed on its first and final reading.
Okay, motion to pass on first and final, second by Mr. Egler, please read the ordinance and call the roll.
Ordinance number 19-11-072, and ordinance amending ordinance 10-12-075, 17-06-040, and 17-07-047, and 17-09-053, and 17-09-057, and 19-06-033, revising the City of Van Wort job creation incentive program as a development tool to recruit and retain business in the City of Van Wort and declaring an emergency. I did. Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Stacy, anything to add for Economic Development?
Groundbreaking last Thursday, our homestead 75-bed assisted living should be operational, target date is February of 2021, looking for 75 to 80 jobs and $2 million in new payrolls.
Thirty-four, thirty-four thousand in taxes.
Jerry's hundred calories laying around.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Economic Development in council? From the public? Thank you, Steve. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Joel Penning.
Thank you, President, no report tonight.
Okay, any questions for Parks and Recreation? Thank you, Joel. Property and Equipment, Mr. Jeff Egler.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Questions for Property and Equipment? Thank you, Jeff. Judiciary and Annexation, Mrs. Joy Murky.
Thank you, Mr. President, I also have no report.
Any questions for Judiciary and Annexation? Thank you, Joy. Finance, Mr. Ken Markworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind everyone that practically everything we did last meeting is on the consent agenda, with also under resolution, an ordinance says there's an item there for the temporary appropriations, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Finance? Thank you, Ken. Streets and Alley, Mr. Steve Tricia.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report tonight.
Any questions for Streets and Alley? Thank you, Steve. Unfinished business, code enforcement will stay there, any new business to come before council this evening? Okay, we have several ordinances on the consent agenda, so I request a motion to introduce the consent agenda by Mr. Egler, do I have a second? By Mr. Marshall? He put his hand up first. I skipped Joel this time. Egler, Marshall. Okay, so it's the motion to introduce the consent agenda, please call the roll.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yeah.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the statutory rules for the consent agenda. Mr. Egler, second by... Come on, Mr. Marshall. Please call the roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Not in the mood for games, just raise your hand. Okay, consent agenda, motion to pass all the ordinances on the consent agenda on first and final. Mr. Egler?
Yep.
Mr. Marshall? Please read all the ordinances and then call the roll.
Consent agenda, ordinance number 1-19-11-066, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriation to funds 101 and 301, and 305, and 601, and 602, and 850, and 851, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 19-11-067, an ordinance to transfer funds from Fund 550 to Fund 101 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 19-11-068, an ordinance to transfer funds from Funds 101, and 201, and 301, and 601, and 602, and 701 to Fund 550 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 19-11-069, an ordinance to transfer funds from Funds 101, and 201, and 301, and 601, and 602, and 701 to Fund 550 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 19-11-070, an ordinance to transfer funds from Fund 601 to Fund 603 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 19-11-062, an ordinance to authorize the Safety Service Director to negotiate and sign contracts with the Pleasant Township trustees for an agreement to extend fire protection to designated areas and unincorporated portions of Pleasant Township and declaring an emergency. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Yes, you did. All right, moving on to resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. Ordinance number 19-11-060, an ordinance modifying the speed limit on North Franklin Street school zone and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Then you get to vote on those individually.
Sorry. Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-11-071, an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for the annual expenses and other expenditures for the City of Van Wort, Ohio, from January 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
This would be second reading also, correct? Did you guys vote on this last time?
I don't think we did, I think it's the first reading.
Okay, then you need to ask for it to be introduced.
I think we did.
Did you, did you, I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to check the minutes, then it would have been read that night.
If it was introduced, it could have been read. If not, then we need to reopen Finance and introduce it.
We should do it, prepare, it was only, it was only prepared.
Yeah.
According to the minutes.
I move it to be introduced.
Okay. So, Mr. Markworth, motions that ordinance number 19-11-071 be introduced, second by Mrs. Murky.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Okay, I have one other thing, and forgive me, I have an ordinance in front of me that we didn't address tonight, 19-11-073 out of Health Service.
Correct, that's what I was going to do.
Should you have introduced that during your report?
Yes, I had, I asked, no, I asked for it to be prepared.
Okay.
Right, last time.
It was asked to be prepared last meeting.
Okay, so you need to, motion to introduce it.
Yes, I'd like to, motion 19-11-073, an ordinance to amend the Van Wort City Code ordinance sections 96.01 and the Van Wort City Code of ordinances. This had to deal with junk cars.
Can I make, can I make a point of order prior to the vote to introduce it?
Okay.
On 073, I believe the first whereas, oh, now I can't remember.
It's the first line, the second line of the whereas.
The second sentence of the first whereas, that should be struck through and replaced with the language, the committee decided that amending the definitions of junk vehicle was in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Van Wort.
With no date, it was restricted to dates before, and this one would be...
No, it would be restricted to age of vehicle.
Age of vehicle.
And that would be specifically, that's number six in the definition of junk vehicle, that would be omitted going forward. With that, with that language added, it makes reading the second page make a little more sense.
Yeah.
Is everybody, everybody good? So I have a motion to introduce 073, do I have a second, Mr. Egler, second?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Murky?
Yes.
Mr. Tricia?
Yes.
Hold on, on the 71 that we just introduced.
Yes.
So it hasn't had its first reading?
Tonight was the first.
So the next time will be the second reading?
Yes.
We haven't read it, or, we haven't had an advisory yet.
That's what I think.
You gotta do it by the adjournment. You're right, sorry.
Well...
We, we just voted on the introduction.
Then I would say, because she needs this to take effect for January 1, if we want three readings, we're going to get two meetings in December, so we're going to need to do the first and final, or can we do the first reading?
It's my fault, we should have done the first reading right now.
Well, if we can still do that.
So we are going to do that, so please make that motion.
I move we read it first time, advisory vote.
Okay, motion to, yes, 19-11-071, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murky.
First reading?
Yeah. Sorry. That's what happens when I'm not here, I don't remember what's going on.
So I need to read it?
No, you just need to ask for it.
Mr. Markworth?